... They're from Hopstav and they're, uh, asking to do stuff out there, so. He's raised heck about that, he's raised heck about, uh, the tribal people that do their
Hello?
Yeah, yeah.
Blame them. Now they're overboiled.
So what, still in the town hall, anything?
So mine or yours, it's yours.
Yeah, that is.
Right over here.
You've had like ten days of nothing but high wind, rain, a cold, or a combination thereof.
It's gorgeous. I had the kids out and the grandkids were down playing on the beach. Bugs are out. Bugs are real glad to see us.
The mosquitoes are...
Yeah.
Did the, uh...
But the winter house still has a whole set of black flies.
L and A ever get any traction?
Yeah, usually they're gone by now, but they were saying the black flies were, I think it's just so it's so wet.
Well, remember they were talking about doing that.
The mosquitoes were definitely there this morning.
It never got anywhere? Okay. Hadn't heard any more about it. I saw a prospectus.
What's happening in the city?
Was given to me at the, uh, Grill Downs stall.
Okay, it's, uh, six thirty and I will call the, uh, Board of Selectmen meeting for the town of Wolfboro, June seventh, two thousand and seventeen, to order. Uh, Mr. Owen, do we have a need for non-public tonight?
Uh, yes, yes, we do, Mr. Chairman. There's, uh, matters of litigation and a personnel matter to discuss.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have, uh, next move on to the minutes, approval of the minutes, uh, dating, uh, May seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen. It was a regular meeting. Board members?
I have a couple changes. Uh, the first one is on, um, page ten. And I, we're talking, I'm looking at the paragraph just before the scenic gravel roads public, uh, forum. And we have a sentence that we had come to a consensus on page sixteen, which is correct in terms of when we took the motion, um, to, uh, move forward with just the overlay. I would like to suggest that we move the motion underneath, uh, this section. Cause when I was reading down through the minutes, it seemed like this motion was stuck in the middle of nowhere. The motion is on page sixteen. And then I was thinking on page sixteen, right after, um, the sentence, um, that says, "Mr. Harriman," um, "Mr. Harriman stated about the motion," and then just put in parentheses after that sentence, move to page ten. So when you read, it makes sense. This thing, when I read it and I was there, it was out, it was just in the middle of nowhere. But if people agree, I would like to see us do that.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor on that?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, okay.
Then on page twelve, I'm looking at the last paragraph, the third sentence. Um, and that starts with "she," it's towards the end of that, and I'd like that sentence to read. "She stated that the drivers can plow at one speed with the plowed down and come back and clean up with the wing at a lower speed." And then the sixth, um, line of that same paragraph, um, I would like to change clearer to wider. And that's at the end of that sixth sentence, okay? Then on page fourteen, the second sentence for, at the top, um, should read, and it will be "the," and I would like gravel put in there, so "the gravel roads." Uh, and then say, "and how they are going to be plowed and what needs to be plowed." And so the whole end of that, I'd like to change to that new wording. I can give this wording to the, um, secretary. And then on page eighteen, um, the one, two, three, uh, fourth paragraph down, it should read, "Linda Mary stated that the lights were not positioned so the light shone down on the clock face, so she asked," and then it can go on after "ask" the way it is, the rest of that. So it's just that first sentence that needs to be changed up to "ask." And then, uh, only other one I have is, um, under committee reports, the third one, which is, um, for me, I also went to the water summit meeting. And that's all I have.
Any other board members, corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
One more. Second?
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Tonight, we have, uh, one public hearing. It's a, uh, temporary outdoor event permit. It's, uh, uh, Calvary, uh, Wolfboro is, uh, asking to hold an outdoor concert family event on July third, two thousand and seventeen, from two P M. to ten P M. at forty-three Mill Street. Gentlemen, would you like to speak to this?
Good evening. My name is Chris Sealy. I'm an assistant pastor there, here with my brother-in-law, Justin, the head pastor. Uh, we're seeking your approval to hold another outdoor event on July third, like we did last year. This event will be free to the public. Uh, we plan on having, uh, games for families and children, uh, snacks and food to give away for free, and, uh, outdoor music and a concert. We'll set up a stage on our property, uh, and a tent. And, uh, we are hoping to just add to the festivities of Fourth of July and give, uh, the town another option for something to do before the parade on the Fourth.
I'll open the, uh, public hearing. Is there any members of the, uh, audience that, uh, have any questions or wish to speak to this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members?
This is your second year, right? You did last year? Yes, ma'am. Was it well attended?
It was. Uh, we didn't get an official number, but I, we believe somewhere between four and five hundred people showed up.
Oh, fantastic. Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? If not, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to Calvary, Wolfboro, to hold an outdoor concert slash family event on July third, two thousand and seventeen, from two to ten P M. at forty-three Mill Street.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Next, we have the, uh, bulk vote, which includes weekly manifest, property tax abatements, refunds, denials, uh, current use land, change tax warrant, yield and tax levy, vouchers to trustees of the trust fund, raffle permits. Could I have a motion to approve the bulk vote?
One more.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Next, we'll move on to, uh, new business and, uh, setting a public hearing date and time for the town dock expansion plan. Mr. Owen, do we have people here, uh?
Well, Mr. Senegal's the chairman of the committee.
There you go.
Hey, we've been working, I think, pretty diligently on this. We've had one meeting with the state. They, uh, certainly seem very, uh, in favor of what we want to do. Met with, uh, Dailene Forst from Shoreline Production and Renee Palatier. Uh, as you know, we also met with the Mount Washington, they're in favor. Met with Tom Woods from the Winnie Bell the other day, and he has no issues, uh, with what we want to do as far as they're coming in and out of their location. So I think that we need to, uh, committee decided that we thought would be good to have a meeting during the summertime, when we might get feedback from people who have boats and come in and out of Wolfboro. So we picked, uh, Thursday, August tenth. We just didn't set a time yet, so we'll be open to any suggestions anybody might have as far as the time. We thought it should be probably early evening, six thirty, seven o'clock, somewhere in that area, and it would be here.
Right. And, and just to be clear, this would be a public hearing of the Board of Selectmen?
Yep.
To hear this?
I, I would suggest seven o'clock. You know, if it's a nice day, people might be, want to stay out on the lake and seven's early enough and yet late enough that they can finish.
Yeah, that's what we suggested, six thirty or seven. Seven is fine.
Seven. What's the date again on that?
August tenth.
August tenth?
August tenth. Yep.
You making that as a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve setting a public hearing on the proposed plan for the expansion of the town docks on Thursday, August tenth at seven P M.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, is there any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Next, we have discussion of the Libby Museum and, uh, the facilities and, uh, update on, uh, some of the issues we've been having there. Mr. Ford?
Hello. Tonight, we are finally, uh, going to be discussing the ventilation issue at the Libby Museum. Uh, what I want to do is just a quick, quick, uh, review of where we've been. This project has been going on for a couple of years. It started with the, uh, structural repairs, in which, um, we had the, we hired, uh, Chris Williams Architect to, uh, work with us and some specialists in reinforcing the building structurally. And then we've been studying the environmental, um, conditions inside the building because of, uh, kind of condensation on the walls and windows, which is, uh, creating, uh, quite a concern. Uh, so we've been studying the inside of the building, uh, and, uh, humidity and the temperature. And, uh, so tonight, we have, uh, Norm Larson from, uh, Chris Williams Architect to, uh, describe, a report was given to you, so he's going to give a quick kind of summary, and then we'll open up for questions, and then we'll discuss the recommendations. So, Norm, why don't you come on up?
Thank you. Um, my name is Norman Larson. I'm an architect and I practice preservation architecture with Chris Williams Architects. Um, we've been working with the Libby Museum for a long time, and I'm confident that you're all familiar with the building, at least. One of the things that's most curious about it is, um, if you're not aware, is that there's an ongoing problem...
Can you push that microphone up closer to you?
Sure. Sorry, is this all right? I'm, I'm hearing myself, so it... All right. Is that all right?
That's better.
Okay. I will, I will keep myself here so that you guys can hear. I'm used to moving around. Um, anyway, the, uh, the museum has some very interesting design characteristics that, um, originally were intended to help the space, which is used only in the summer, um, to stay cool. And that is, it has double walls at the perimeter of the building that vent crawl space air that's drawn in from the lakeside and the road, um, through the cool crawl space and then come up and sort of arrive in the museum at the window sills. This was the primary source of moisture, or we assumed that it was the primary source of moisture, when we started looking at what is causing seasonal condensation and icing on the walls and mostly in the fall and early winter. Um, year after year, you'd have this problem where condensation would form on the, on the windows and on the walls on certain corners. In order to test this, we, um, placed sensors around the building, um, sensors that detect, uh, humidity levels and temperature, um, outside the building, inside the building, on the glass, inside the museum proper, and inside the crawl space. And over a period of two years, we monitored conditions as we, um, with the help of the Public Works Department, tried different ways of arranging the venting so that we could see what happened if you closed off the air from the outside by closing the outside windows or the crawl space windows. What happens if we close the vents at the top to prevent that air and that chimney effect from like pulling as much air through? Um, and we, we found some of what we expected, but the, the greatest thing we found over the course of time and taking all this information together and aggregating into one data model, was that the primary source of this condensation problem is, um, actual weather events moving through. And you could see by looking at the data that's, um, there's a chart in the back, that, um, what happens is when, and when I say a weather vent, I mean like a big storm that comes for a couple of days. And what you see is that the humidity level, humidity levels rise dramatically outside the building first, as air temperatures typically cool. And then the museum space follows that trend before the crawl space does. And so you can see that, um, what is actually happening is the, the primary moisture load is like arriving at the time of these weather vents. And then that same sort, same time period, usually the temperatures drop because it goes from being sunny to being not sunny. And that little trend just allows things to cross and creates a problem where for a couple of days, uh, moisture condenses on the walls. So, um, we looked at, we theorized that a way that, that we could address that is by using air movement. And, um, basically, there's, there's a principle in thermodynamics that says that, you know, the coldest surface is where you see condensation. And it's something we use like in the design of a wine cellar. You put a pit at the bottom of the wine cellar and that coolest surface in the pit is where condensation forms. And in the, in the Libby Museum, because it's an uninsulated building, the, uh, primary place where you see condensation is on the walls, the exterior walls, because the backside of the exterior walls is on the cold side of the building. So, um, last year, with running another experiment, we set up, um, box fans in the floor, the Department of Public Works set that up, and, um, most of the, most of the building's interior walls were just blown with a little bit of air. And that air disturbance is enough to, um, remove what in, um, what we would consider to be a film of air. There's, there's just a way that, that buildings work, that there's a little bit of a film of air that's along, right along the outside of any wall surface or roof or a floor. And that surface is just a little bit colder because that air that, you know, that's only a hair width thick, um, is colder than all the rest of the building. And because that air is colder than all the rest of the building, it hits its due point first. And that's where the humidity, the moisture comes from. By, by stirring up the air and keeping that from forming, it basically warms the surface just enough that the condensation doesn't happen. And, um, that was the theory, and last year, it seemed to work. The areas where there was a fan, there, where there were fans, which was most of the museum, didn't have the condensation problem, and the areas where there, where no fan was placed, those areas still saw the condensation. So we're seeing what we expected to see. Um, the next step is to, is to look at putting a system in place that will do the same job, um, as, in an automatic fashion, without having to place these fans around. And we looked at different alternatives. Um, with the mechanical engineer, you know, one of the things we could do is we could use a ducted system. And a ducted system would be something where we had a, um, a large-scale fan and ductwork that was either hidden, there, there are two attics, or there's really sort of four attics in the Libby Museum. It's, it's quite a complex structure up above. There's, the ceiling that you see when you're standing inside is not this, not the underside of the roof. It's another sloped surface that is a different pitch than the roof above. And there's kind of a crazy triangular-shaped attic space that runs around the entire perimeter of the building that's only accessible from the front porch. Above, in the middle of the building, there's a, a, an attic that has a flat ceiling and, um, and that act, that attic is only accessible via a trapdoor that you have to go through the ceiling that you see today, which is a suspended ceiling that is about four feet or six feet above where the pitch point of that interior ceiling is. So there's all these enclosed spaces, but, um, so the places where the ducts could go are affected by where these ceilings are in place. The, there is a hope and an aspiration among many, as we've talked about, the history of the building, to perhaps sometime put the original ceiling back in place. And that ceiling was a plaster ceiling that was having some, um, problems with the, the way that it was tied to the lattice work. And so those ceilings were failing, and that's what led to the installation of the original, um, lay-in ceiling. That lay-in ceiling caught the things that were falling into the museum. And it's been replaced over time because it was, the first one was damaged, and so there's actually were, when we did the structural work, two sets of ceiling tiles. We took one out, um, when we did the structural repair. The ductwork could be either in the original attic around the perimeter. That would hide it, um, in the long term, but would be sort of the most expensive way to, to solve this problem. And it also would put the ducts sort of in a difficult place to try to blow on the sur, on the wall surfaces. Cause what we really want to do is to move air on the wall surface, not necessarily to stir the air in the space. You could run the ductwork below the existing ceiling or below the historic ceiling, um, in an exposed fashion. So you'd see it sort of running around the library, running around the museum. That's not a very, um, aesthetic solution for this historic building. Um, and you, or you could do something where you put it above the, what I would call maybe the temporary ceiling, the suspended ceiling that's in place, in which case you're sort of locking in that ceiling as a permanent thing. And you have a lot of the same problems in terms of getting it around inside the enclosed space. It's challenging and, um, and unnecessarily costly. So we were looking for something that was, um, a little more passive in the way that it worked and, um, came upon, uh, just trying to do this with ceiling fans. And not all ceiling fans are engineered to sort of provide a lot of air. And the first solutions we looked at had, um, much larger fans sort of in the center. Um, there's a company whose name I don't even like to say, and I'm not gonna. Um, but they make some really big fans. And, um, and, but the, the engineers came back with designs that had those fans asymmetrically placed in the, in the space because of the way the partitions are laid out. And, um, I felt that was unworkable in this sort of, this striking building that has symmetry at sort of the heart of its organization. Um, so we looked at a, what I think is actually a less expensive solution that involves more smaller fans. These fans are sort of, there are eight fans that sort of are around the perimeter of the building, and they are, um, essentially, they're large versions, they're five-foot fans, um, that you might find in a large home. It's, those fans could be operated with an automatic system that watched for when these weather vents were coming. Um, because now that we know what the triggers are going to be, conceivably, we could find, we could watch that weather pattern. However, um, at this point, we found that operating the CPU in the museum had, um, ongoing problems. And I'm not sure if those problems were related to this CPU or the fact that it was working in, you know, freezing conditions, you know, below freezing conditions some of the time, um, or if it was related to the internet connection that connected it to the outside world. But we regularly had to go and restart the system in order to get it to work. And so a system that watched the weather would be something that would have to be somewhat monitored, at least for the first couple of years. And that's a, that's an extra cost, too, um, because that's somebody coming to the Libby Museum in the middle of winter, um, when they don't need to. So our preliminary recommendation at this point is to, um, simply operate the fans seasonally from mid-October through January or March, um, as we see fit. It's sort of, it's a matter of watching. Um, these, the solution is one that is, uh, you know, I, I, it hasn't been tested for a lot of years, but it seems it acted the way we expected it to, and so, um, it seems like a good idea. The second part of this was to go back to where we started, which was the question of, you know, what is the, um, impact of all the high humidity conditions that we have around the museum itself? Um, the, the water body across the way contributes to the crawl space. The crawl space itself is damp. When you look at the measurements and the statistics we got in the report, um, the crawl space is always, you know, at least about ninety percent relative humidity. And so it's... Just wanted me, just to tie in, what I handed out was the layout, so just so you understand. I handed out that layout. So what I, what I gave everyone, so you understand, was the actual recommendation, the size of the fan, and then the layout, eight fans which would cover the building. So I just want to make sure everyone understood what I, what I handed out before we go on to the vapor barrier, because you're going to start talking about the... I was going to talk about the vapor, yes. Does anyone have any questions about the fan?
This is the ceiling fans.
These are the ceiling fans and the building layout, eight fans across.
Yeah, okay.
So, and these, and the fans, you know, note that they're more toward the perimeter than they are toward the center of the space. They have the, um, the added advantage of, you know, in the wintertime, they can be used to keep condensation off the walls. In the summertime, as we make, work to make this building tighter, they also will help to stir the air and cool the, the people who are in the museum. So it has a dual benefit, um, which makes it particularly palatable. Going back to the vapor barrier that I was, uh, getting at was, um, the way to address, um, that moisture load in the crawl space. And the two things that we suggested are, um, at this, at the outset, are simply to get a vapor barrier on the floor of that crawl space to keep the soil moisture on the bottom side of it. And the other is to, um, construct seasonal, um, enclosures on the four access points that are on the roadside. And that's just a matter of putting them in and out. I think those, that load proved not to be the primary source of this problem, and there are already, um, panels that we closed those up with seasonally. So I think the first thing to look at is the fans themselves. That, that, those address the actual problem that's in the museum. If the fans don't perform as expected, then the next step would be to, um, take a tighter look at the, at the crawl space and look to reduce moisture loads there. And, and I, I think that would still be a good idea, but I know, I know that funds are limited. And then down the road, if something happens and the museum is ever, um, you know, truly conditioned, um, year-round, then that would be a separate and much larger project to entertain.
So with that, we'd like to open up some questions. If someone's read the report, because we don't want to get to the whole, the report, there's a lot more in the report, but that's the summary. So what we're recommending, and, and just to go for the budget numbers, we had appropriated a hundred thousand dollars a few years ago. Most of it went to structure. We have thirty-five thousand left in that budget, and we've priced out the fans and the insulation, and we think we can cover that cost, uh, in about twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. We don't think we're going to have enough to do the, um, the, the vapor barrier along the whole basement, although we are going to price that out and see what that costs in, uh, other, uh, aspects. So, uh, we're hopefully, a phased approach, so that we're recommending is this fall, when it, when it closes, we'll go in there and put the fans in, operate it this, uh, this winter, see how it operates, price out the, uh, the next step, and then determine, uh, whether or not we want to put it in next year's budget. Or, at the same time, the parallel track, the Friends of Libby and the new director, we need to talk about the long-term, um, status of the, uh, there's been discussions about a potential expansion. Uh, we've talked about the ceiling, and then we've got to talk about the exhibits. Uh, I think, um, talking to Elena, we are concerned about the long-term condition of the exhibits and, and the, and the, and the actual environment inside the building. So, uh, I think the phased approach makes some sense. Put the fans in now, hopefully that'll mitigate the, the, most of the problem, and then we can kind of, uh, phase in. If it doesn't work a hundred percent, then we can kind of go for the vapor barrier. And then the third step would be insulation, which would tie into the potential future of the building. So with that, if you'll take any questions?
I just want to make sure, you're talking about, the first solution is with the box fans, not the ceiling fans, or are you talking about the ceiling fans?
We are talking about the ceiling fans. What I handed out, the, the fans...
This is the, what you're recommending?
Yes.
Okay. I wasn't clear what you were...
I'm sorry, yeah. And, and those eight fans, the cost for the fans is about, we priced that out, it's about twelve, thirteen thousand, just for the cost of the fans. But we've got to build staging, the electrical, and all the other stuff. So we, we feel it'll be another probably twenty thousand for installation, and there'll be some cost for the architect to assist with that, uh, you know, that process. And then we'll, you know, so we feel confident we can get that done this fall. The vapor barrier, we're not sure, but like you said, as we explained, the phased approach might make, make the most of our sense, buys us some time until we decide the long-term.
The, um, looks like we've got about thirty-four watts at high speed, thirty-eight watts. We got enough power up there?
That's a good question. Of, of the eight fans, have we got an issue with power?
It's going to require eight circuits, probably.
I don't, I don't think so. And I don't think there'll be eight circuits.
Well, if there, it says...
That's something we'll have to evaluate in the designs.
It says the maximum of speed, they're going to use thirty-eight watts.
They won't be operating actually at maximum speed. There's only eight fans and thirty-eight watts is, you know, a small half a light bulb.
Well, I just, I'm asking the question, do we have enough power?
I believe we do. And we'll double check that, make sure. That's part of the electricians, we'll, we'll look at the load.
All right.
And, and if you ran it to circulate in the summer, you'd still roll, uh, run them in that smaller speed, lower speed?
That would be, again, a condition depending on, uh, what the needs are, and I think it'll be a trial and error type thing.
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at it in terms of electrical, you know...
From, from an electrical engineering point of view...
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I want, I want to be clear that, that if there's a need for an upgrade to electrical system, we would see that during the design part of the project.
Okay.
And we'll, and we'll, and we'll address it in, as part of the... We'll price out the electricians, because we need it for the budget, if it's going to be more... Yes. Yeah, so we can price that out for next year's budget.
And if you're going to put the fans on, you would make sure that you could in the middle of the summer, if we had a ninety-degree day, that you could run those, so...
Absolutely, they need to work with this.
The full thing, okay.
Yeah, that, that, that could help out earlier.
I'm, I'm comfortable with it. It sounds like a good approach. We have the funds and it moves us forward in this whole, working with the structure now onto the moisture and it's... now onto the moisture, and it's, I guess what I'm hearing, it's one step in dealing with the moisture issue, and it's the first one. I'm fine with that.
Yes.
No, I don't think, well, he gets it. I'm sorry, no questions.
I don't know. Um, no, these are, you know...
What was the question, Alan?
The question, the question was, will the fans create a noise problem in the museum? And while, because the museum is so quiet, I think you might be able to hear them, I don't think that it will be, um, you know, something that, that bothers you. Um, and I also think it, it by no means would compare to the sound of the traffic noises outside. Does that make sense?
Says it's less than thirty-five decibels, uh, maximum speed, so that's pretty quiet.
Yes. Thirty-five decibels at maximum speed.
Thirty-five.
Oh, well...
I'd say it'd be pretty quiet.
I have two questions, um, on the...
Can she look this?
Thank you very much. I have just, um, two quick questions. I, I applaud the, um, emphasis on actually putting in the fans to reduce the moisture. But past reports have also highlighted the issue of the ramp, the disabled ramp, that is hard up against the back of the building and holds moisture against the back of the building. When I went into the building, um, about a month ago, there was mold completely over the office back wall that had to be removed. And that has been happening year after year, because the disabled ramp needs to be built in a different way. So, I do think that that is an important issue also to take care of. The second thing is a question about the impact of the fans on the suspended ceiling. Several of the tiles are coming loose on the suspended ceiling, not quite sure if they're gonna actually make it through the summer. The suspended ceiling is in tough shape. Is that suspended ceiling actually gonna come down, or be repaired? Or, I know that we've talked about wanting to go back to the original ceiling, which is ultimately what we'd like to do, but I have a lot of concerns about the current state of the suspended ceiling. Thank you.
I'll address both, both the questions. So, the first on the ADA ramp, that is an issue, uh, that was, um, something we addressed back in two thousand and ten. Uh, we're not aware that was creating this additional problem, so it has to be looked at, and that'll have to be at a future phase as we look at other building, uh, issues. Um, the, uh, the second issue with regards to the, the tiles and the condition, it is, um, they've been up there for a while, uh, and, um, I, I don't believe, we did look at them, I don't think there's any danger of them, uh, falling right now, but long-term, uh, there is gonna be a need to either replace them with a more robust drop ceiling, or what I think everyone would prefer, go back to the vaulted ceiling like we did here. And, uh, while I thought that was gonna be extremely expensive, it's not out of the question. I think we did price it, uh, it was fifty, around fifty thousand dollars, which is not cheap money, but, uh, to bring back that, that original, um, uh, ceiling would be, like, like we did here, it would be, uh, you know, some, but that's gonna be something we have to look at long-term, and I think the Friends and, and the Selectmen have to look at that as a separate issue.
Yeah, if we put these fans in, and then we have to replace the ceiling, are we gonna then have to take the fans down to get the ceiling? I mean, I'm hoping we engineer and know that the ceiling is okay.
Right. The fans will be actually mounted to the original ceiling...
Okay.
...the structure of the original ceiling, and they will puncture through...
Okay.
...the, uh, the suspended ceiling. So, the suspended ceiling can stay as long as it wants, and when you take it out, the fans will remain exactly where they are.
Good, perfect.
And a question for Dave. My thought is, if, you know, go ahead with this, you said you're gonna have some staging in there, stuff obviously to get up there to install these fans, but it makes sense to also take a good look at some of these tiles that are in question, and if we had to, just to, you know, just replace some of the tiles that might be, you know, deteriorating...
Absolutely, yeah.
You know, replace them while we have staging there, and...
Yep, yeah, absolutely. When, when it's there, it's very easy. If we see something that looks discolored or something that we could replace, we could definitely do that this fall. And again, like, we, we're gonna have a few extra dollars, so if we had to replace, uh, you know, a couple dozen, wouldn't be a, wouldn't be an issue at all.
Okay.
But I, I still think we need to look at the long-term, so we gotta kind of keep that as the next project. But this one here, we do have to draw to an end, which is, will be this, the fans, and then, uh, we'll kind of, at the end of this year, we'll probably expend the, the rest of the money that's in that account now. And then, uh, next year, we'll, we'll talk about the budget for, um, the vapor barrier and/or whether or not we want to continue to study looking at the ceiling.
I guess that, you know, I hear what you're saying, we're really looking at, almost like a long-range plan, asset management plan for that building, and you know how I support that. And I'd like to know who and who's going to do that, and it makes sense that we get it going so that we make informed decisions as we move forward.
Yeah. Well, at this point, we don't have that scope within our budget to do the asset management plan, but this is exactly what we're talking about. We are trying to build the specific issues, but we should build all the issues for the building. And working with Elena, I think that's something that we'll try to achieve this, this year to get the framework, and maybe we can include that in our asset management study next year.
Well, because we didn't, this year, we didn't appropriate any more money, and last year, and next year, it seems like that that's...
Be a good one, let's pick up on it.
Yeah, okay.
Agreed. Any other questions? We're all set?
Thank you. So, you're gonna move forward with the fans?
I, yep, right now, I don't, unless there's a disagreement, I think it's a logic, I mean, the Friends, Brad, you're all set, uh, do we need to meet with the Friends, you think, to go over this with them, or?
I don't think so. We have one other member here with the Friends here, I think, the Friends as a total are totally in favor of moving forward, getting some of these things straightened out, so, you know, I don't want to speak for all of them, but I believe that, you know, we're very anxious about seeing some, uh, some progress in that regard, so, I think it's a good step in the right direction.
I, I'm worried for, I think that we should not be looking at a Libby, we should be really looking at a long-range plan, make the Libby, you know, and, and that's where I think, I as a friend, I as a supporter of Libby since I was like five years old, um, and my baby, too, I think we should really think about a long-range step, and just the fans, and the fans can help. But like Anna says, you know, the ramp is finished, it's been a long time, and, and we just have to really work on this. We really need to, it's important, an awful lot, I find, but, you know, it's important to treasure, to look out, and to...
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We've got this part of it.
Yep.
Next, we have, talking about the, uh, proposal for an expanded, uh, museum space. Uh, Dave?
Yes, I think Alan's here to address that.
Sure. Yep.
Now, let's see if we got this one right. Can you hear me?
Yes, we got it.
For the record, I'm Alan Harding. I, uh, and my wife have lived here in Wolfboro for forty-five years, taxpayers. I've been active with some of the committees in town. I was chairman of the ZBA for six years and served nine years total, and I'm currently on the EDC, on my second, second three-year term on that. I'm here tonight, it seems like I may be throwing a curveball here with the, uh, the Libby. I, I wanna tell you a little story about why I'm here, what we're proposing. I have some dear friends, uh, we live in North Wolfboro, that we were at dinner with, uh, three or four years ago, and the other guests at the table said, "The, uh, host has got quite a collection of, of animals." And, "Oh, would you like to see it?" So, he said, "Sure, let's, let's go take a peek." So, we walked over this door, which is just a regular door in a room, and it opened up into something that deserves a wow. The potential donor here has over two hundred animals in this collection, mostly mammals, all from North America. There's a couple of reptiles involved, there's a twelve-foot alligator that, uh, you wouldn't want to invite to a dance, that's for sure. In any event, um, so that was part one. I was very impressed with it, uh, and we picked up our relationship, and last summer, I was on his porch, and I said, uh, we'll call him John and Jane Doe. I said, "John, when the good Lord gives you a call, what are you gonna do with all this?" This meaning the exhibits that they had in their home. He said, "I don't know. My children don't want it." Apparently, he investigated that. So, I said, putting on my EDC hat, I guess, I said, "Well, why don't you donate it to the Libby Museum?" Well, they thought about it, and two or three days later, they said, "That's not a bad And that's about where we are at the moment. I am basically representing a Massachusetts foundation, a five oh one C three charitable foundation. Uh, there's another trustee with me, we're founding trustees of the foundation. And we've done a lot of work here in Wolfboro, quietly, privately, and we see this, this addition to the museum collection as a giant asset, not only to the Libby, but to the museums here in Wolfboro. If you think about it, why do people come here? It's the oldest summer resort in America, or so I'm told, you know, somebody comes along and says they're number one. But, what, what do you do in the wintertime? What do you do off-season? And this is, this is the, uh, problem that the businesses have here. My theory is that we should emphasize, and the EDC has subsequently voted to approve this concept of a, a museum town. We have five museums, or will have when they're all completed. I'm sure you can all name them. Concord, the capital of New Hampshire, has three, and there's only two other towns that have more, Portsmouth and, and Manchester. This is a perfect draw for more tourists. Now, if I could add an aside, which I probably shouldn't, but I will anyway, if we had more housing, hotel rooms, we could handle all of this throughout the whole season. And if we had a conference center, which is, which would draw people from all over the country, we'd really have something here as far, as far as an economic engine is concerned. It's in its nascent position right now, and it's growing. So, we at the foundation would propose a two-thirds, one-third split. We put up two-thirds of the money to house this collection, and the town puts up a third. But first, we've gotta figure out how much this whole thing is gonna cost. And when I said I'm probably throwing a curveball, this has to do with what David Ford was talking about, about the ventilation and the, the ceiling problems. Is that going to be affected by if you folks prove of this as a concept to move forward on? Is that gonna get in the way of what we're saying? Do we need an additional building? I think we do. But could it be incorporated in this, the whole cavity of the museum right now? I don't think so. So, there's issues here if you accept the donation by John and Jane Doe. Now, in terms of the cost, to, to determine the cost, it would probably be, and I've spoken with Chris Williams before, a long time ago, two or three times in fact, that it seems as if the expense would be about seventy-five thousand dollars. Of that, we would pay a maximum of fifty thousand, and the rest of it'd be up to the town to take care of that. There would be other stipulations involved. For example, we'd like to have an idea, and, and this should be done, that the museum figures out on a pro forma basis, with a new addition, what are the expenses involved? Can they, can't, can they take the expenses involved, the additional? And then you throw in the ceiling and all this other business, is it possible to do this in an economical way? So, what I'd like to do is to ask you folks, and you can ask as many questions as you'd like, I'd like to walk out of here tonight with an indication of interest that, uh, you wanna go forward with this program. And the first step is to figure out how much it's gonna cost. Now, we, we can't get to, to a Warren article next spring, and it may be serendipitous, because the library is, is going up for some money next March, and we don't wanna conflict with that. So, I think what you, you've already proposed, I believe, I'm not sure where the Selectmen stand on this, to ask for twenty-five thousand dollars, is that correct? For this purpose?
I, we haven't had a conversation about it, that has been what has been floated around.
All right, so there's been, there's nothing official on that? Okay, well, maybe that should be determined tonight, I'm not trying to how to, tell, tell you how to conduct your business, but I'd like to get going on this if we can. So, that's, that's about it. That's my, I think this is a fabulous collection, the donors are enthusiastic about it. I'd like to think that now we know the EDC is, and it's a, it's a big benefit for the town. It's as simple as that. But, there's complications, as everything we, we do these days. So, do you have any questions? I'll try to answer.
Would? Thank you.
I, I guess I, I would like to speak up here. To me, it seems like that the first step is to, to go out and the town to put a Warren article for twenty-five thousand, unless we can do some fundraising, that the foundation comes up with the other fifty, and we need to get, you know, conversation with Chris Williams to find out the feasibility of it. And if it's feasible, then we can look where it goes from there. If it, it's not feasible after we spend this money, we know we can, we can, all of us can move away from the project. Um, I agree with Alan, I think it is a, um, uh, possibility of a real economic driver. I like the fact of Wolfboro becoming a museum town, I think that fits in with who we are. Um, I'm hoping that first we can build our shoulder mugs, and then eventually, if we got a convention center, we might be able to run some of these wonderful museums all year long. I think the Libby is a very valuable asset. I also support us doing an asset management plan for what we have, um, and kind of put the two together. So, that's where I, I stand. Um, I'd like to make a motion that this board supports a, uh, possible Warren article for twenty-five thousand dollars on the two thousand and eighteen warrant.
Second that.
Okay, motion's been made, and seconded, uh, any discussion from the board on the... Dean, none of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
That's the first step.
Thank you, Alan.
Next, we have some barn preservation easement deeds, Mr. Owen?
Uh, yes, at, uh, one of your last meetings, uh, the board, uh, held the required public hearings, uh, on the proposed discretionary preservation easements for some historic agricultural structures, namely barns, and the board voted to, uh, move forward and take the next, uh, step, uh, in this process. So, we've had town council draw up the preservation easement deed doc, documents, you have them in your, your packets. Uh, the one thing that you didn't do, uh, last time, was to decide what degree of, uh, relief to grant on the assessments of these barn structures. Uh, as I think you know, the statute has a, uh, provides a range from twenty-five percent to seventy-five percent abatement, um, and... And the other discretionary preservation easements for barns that you have in town are mostly at the 50% level, although you do have one at the 25% level. So the, the board needs to first decide what level of relief to provide, and then to vote to approve and sign the documents if you wish to move forward.
Board members?
Yeah, I think that in our discussions, as mentioned before, we've gone with 50% on the barn easement situation. And I would like to make a motion that we grant the 50% waiver for these two barns. And I know we have to take them individually.
Okay.
However you want to do it, you can do it together if you wish.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. We need to read these exactly as they are, Dave? We need to read these exactly as they are, or?
We'll fill in the blanks on the documents.
Okay.
Originals are here to be signed.
Okay. So motion's been made and seconded. Any other further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, those are done.
Then, was that just on the?
He put them two, he put the two together in motion.
Put the both of them together?
Both of them.
Okay, so they're all approved?
They're approved.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Next, we have discussion and goals for the 2018 to 2027 CIP.
I think Matt is here to discuss this with us. We have a revised memo. We had the wrong dates on these. 2018 CIP, we're talking about.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for having me here, members of the board. This is obviously the first step in the development of the 2018 Capital Improvements Program. In, on June 3rd of last year, actually, the board adopted the 2017 goals of the CIP. And it's for that reason that I'm here tonight to present these draft goals to you. And I thought for the interest of the public and for you all that I could review these. And we could have a discussion of them if you're comfortable with that.
I am.
If it's appropriate. The first draft goal is to have all departments spread their projects over 10 years. The second goal is new capital project submissions should, whenever possible, be programmed into the out-years of the CIP. Item three, to continue to phase large projects into smaller, more digestible pieces, and to give consideration of natural division points in a project and cost differences between a phased project and unphased projects. Four, to encourage the use of capital reserve accounts as a method to spread the cost of a project over a number of years so bonding would not be necessary. Five, to look at developing smaller projects into yearly appropriations instead of every other year, for example sidewalk projects. Six, to propose no more than one major building project per year. Seven, to plan departmental projects based on the assumption that the library project is scheduled for 2018. Eight, to maintain focus on achieving and keeping ADA compliance at all town facilities. Nine, to maintain funding for town road infrastructure upgrades. Ten, to continue focus on building maintenance and repairs of town facilities. Eleven, to utilize the alternative design to improve and expand the restrooms at dockside. And 12, to consider the future reuse of the electrical generation building on Lainer Street. And to evaluate the need for a new community center after the addition of the Town Hall Great Room, Abenaki Four Seasons Lodge, and the new library. And those are 12 with some slight modification from both myself and the town manager as presented to you tonight as a draft.
Linda?
I, I have one addition that I would like on number seven. And I believe I have the right date. We also should signal that the Public Safety Building is scheduled for 2022, I believe. It's either '22 or '23. But I think that also needs to be signaled there.
Okay. Any other comments on these?
Any other questions from the board?
And I do know this was listed as a discussion item, but in the interest of the process of prior years, I would like to seek adoption perhaps tonight so they can be included in the materials to go to the department heads, if you're comfortable.
Using, gonna use the same materials?
Well, no, I'm only saying that in prior years, these were formally adopted by the board. And this was listed as a discussion item on the agenda tonight, but I'm looking for adoption of these with the amendment that you suggested, if you're comfortable with that.
I will move to accept these as the 2018 through 2027 CIP goals.
One through 12.
One through 12.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Next, we have a discussion to follow up on the rural roads, scenic roads. Mr. Owen?
Well, this is just intended as a follow-up discussion. The board had Mr. Ford present his recommendations, and there was some discussion about either forming a committee or doing a follow-up public forum event. And so the board needs to decide which way we're moving.
I would like to suggest that we form a committee and kind of use the Doc Committee as a model, that we put two selectmen on that committee that, with Brad and all his experience, have him be chair and another member of the board. And then, three or four different people from the community and sit down and kind of try to work through the material. I hope they'll use some of the material found in the master plan. I think Suzanne Ryan gave us a, a nice packet, and there's a lot of things that I think are important there. And hopefully, they can transfer into the new master plan. And I just think that that would be a, a good way to go. And as would the Doc Committee come back and give recommendations to the board. And then we might want to have some kind of a public hearing after that. But that's what I'm suggesting.
I agree with that.
To add on, just a little bit on to that. Put this committee together, I'd like to make sure we kind of, the people that we end up putting on it, that we get a kind of a spread of representation from around the town and not have one area of the town be, you know, overrepresented or something like that. I think we should, because, oh, we're not looking at just, you know, like the scenic roads, stuff like that, which kind of triggered a lot of this. So we really want to look at the entire town road system and, you know, policies and things like that. So it's, I want to make sure that we represent, you know, get representation from, you know, all around town on this.
I agree with you. That's a very good idea.
Do we put something out asking people to sign up? Or how, will we proceed? Because we're, we're apt to get a whole bunch of people, I think, as far as names and stuff.
So maybe we form the committee, and then make a recommendation that there be five or, you know, five, two selectmen and five citizens that sit, that sign up for it.
Yeah, I think Brad said we ought to limit probably the number as well.
We get a list of them, and then we can look at where they live and put them on, you know, in relationship to.
Sure.
We can do a public hearing, or a public notice, rather, and solicit applications for members to the committee and bring that back to a subsequent meeting if it's agreeable.
Sounds good.
Sounds great.
Okay.
We have a discussion, the ducks at Albee Beach. The gentleman here from last year, speak to that again.
Good evening. Can you hear me? I'm Mike Spence, and my neighbor Dave Demby. And we were here last year, and you were all very accommodating, and we appreciate that. We did have success with the firecrackers. However, with spring and summer coming, when I came out, the camp to come here, there were five ducks heading, heading our way. So they're still there, and briefly, we'd just like to have your permission to continue. I don't know if there's been any complaints or anything. We've never heard of it then. So that's why we're here, just to continue what we've been doing. It's been successful.
Yep, I, I would agree. I think the firecrackers were very successful and that, for whatever reason, when you use them, they tend to remember that, and they don't come back very much. So I think it was a success all around.
Except there's, the, the new ones are coming.
Or the ones that don't have good memory.
Yeah. Yes, I think so. And, and the geese, you know, they're there too. And they're a nuisance. So that's why we're here.
Or remember so many questions, or?
I don't have any problem in continuing what they're doing.
I agree.
I don't either.
Yeah.
Isn't a 410 might work better?
Excuse me?
A 410 might work better.
We're trying to stay out of trouble? But we, we'll take that under advisement. Well, the town father said. Anyways, thank you very much, and we'll see you next year.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yep.
Next is a discussion, the Wolfboro Farmers Market.
Hello, my name is Laureen Strauch, and I am the chairman of the Wolfboro Agricultural Commission. This is Sarah Silk, vice chairman. On May 4th, a concern was brought to our attention by Ag Commission members about not being allowed to sell at the Wolfboro Area Farmers Market. On June 1st, we met again, and after a lengthy discussion about the license agreement between the town and the Wolfboro Agricultural Farmers Market, Area Farmers Market, we decided to take this concern to the board of selectmen. Sarah has done research on this issue and is here to advise the board of our concern.
I looked online, and I found a list for the summer market vendors for the farmers market. And currently, I don't know if others are, there was a deadline for signing up. So I feel pretty secure that the list that's there is probably accurate. They have 30 vendors at this time listed for the summer 2017. Four of them come from Maine, 26 of them come from New Hampshire. One is from Brookfield, one is from Concord, one is from Effingham, one is from Gilmington, one is from Laconia, one is from Milton, one is from New Durham, three are from Oscepe, two are from Sanbenton, one is from Somersworth, two are from Tuftonboro, one is from One Alancet, one did not have an address listed. And only eight of them are from Wolfboro. That's eight out of 30. There is a partial list that tells what the people vend. Eight have vegetables, two have plants, one has fruit, eight have baked goods, two have fish, a couple of dog treats. We know there are a lot, a number of them that sell chicken. There are a number of vendors that sell the same items, but you know, that's like downtown. We have more than one pizza place, we have more than one coffee place, we have more than one restaurant. I also went to the Farmers Market vendor terms. And their terms, they say the Wolfboro Area Farmers Market definition of local is any product grown or produced in New Hampshire or produced within 50 miles of Wolfboro. Vendors may sell products grown or produced by others, but must label the origin of all such products. All produce must be grown or produced within the state of New Hampshire or within 50 miles of Wolfboro. And it is the State Department of Ag that says, you know, if it was made in New Hampshire, you can call it local. So if you live in Berlin, if you came down to Dover and got it, you could still call it local because it's made within the boundaries of the state. I'm not sure what they're doing about the labeling, but there are only a few of them that get produce at certain times of the year when things haven't really started growing here, they get it from elsewhere. We think those terms seem reasonable. And they also say that the people that vend there must follow all of the permitting and licensing as required by the Department of Agriculture, Department of Health and Human Services, and the Division of Ways and Measures. I next looked at the licensing agreement that the town has with the Farmers Market. And it also involves the Wolfboro Historical Society because they have a 99-year lease, and they have to acquiesce that the Farmers Market can be there. And if you look at page four of that agreement, it says, whereas licensee desires to use a portion of Clark Park, which is Farmers Market, a seasonal weekly event in which local growers offer their locally grown, raised, and/or processed food and farm products for sale to the public. And this is from June 1st through October 30th. We feel that that section, and the fact that they call it the Wolfboro Areas Farmers Market, really indicates that local farmers should have a priority and be included. The request that we have is that it be reasonable that a change be made to the agreement that Wolfboro farmers who pay taxes, employ local people, have a preference for Wolfboro's Town Farmers Market. There is a precedent in the town of Wolfboro. We have peddlers and hawkers licenses that we give out and preferences given to people who live within the town. At the June 1st meeting, the motion that was made that was for the Farmers Market to be required to include all Wolfboro farmers or vendors to sell their products as long as they obeyed all of the rules of the Farmers Market. Because there is less than 26% of the 30 farmers from Wolfboro, we think that it is important that we have a safeguard so that our local farmers who grow this stuff within our town boundaries are able to sell those local products on the town-owned property, which is for the Farmers Market. We're not looking to change, you know, most of the, the regulations that they have in their Farmers Market, all the requirements for membership and all that. We're not looking to change that. We're not looking to change the state definition of local. We're not looking to change that 50-mile radius. We're just asking that Wolfboro farmers have a level playing field and be able to sell their goods and produce there, and that the Farmers Market be required to allow the Wolfboro farmers to be included because it is town-owned property. So we would be hopeful, and I believe we have probably six of our members here tonight from the Ag Commission, there's Dave Strauch, Laureen, myself, Karen and Dennis DeVilde are here, and Alan Frederickson are here. But we were really hoping that at the time that we had our meeting on June 1st, the agreement had not been signed for this year, although the Farmers Market has started. And we do have an ability in our licensing agreement, the town's licensing agreement, to make changes. And we would hope that you would be sympathetic and understanding of our request to give preference to Wolfboro farmers as you do for the hawkers and peddlers license. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can.
I read something about Dennis DeVilde has been denied the right to be there, is that right?
That is my understanding. He might be able to address that better than me.
Under what grounds are we denying, what grounds is the committee denying a Wolfboro farmer, especially Dennis, probably one of the biggest, from being there? What, what are the grounds?
Dennis, perhaps you could better answer that? You have to come up here so they can.
Hi. In a letter I received from the, the board of the Farmers Market, they said there were already too many vendors selling the same products that I would sell. Too many vendors selling the same products that I sell.
Well, I, I, as speaking for myself and probably the board, I think we should give a preference to Wolfboro taxpayers, employers, and everything else. Like Linda said, and I, I don't, I think that any Wolfboro farmer who's been properly vetted to be sure that chickens are clean or whatever, should be allowed to be there. or whatever, should be allowed to be there, period. Maybe even up front or something. I mean, it is a Wolfboro thing. They're on Wolfboro property. They pay taxes and somebody from wherever, you know, Concord isn't paying any Wolfboro taxes at all.
Yeah, my question was, you mentioned that the, there was a deadline to sign up to be a vendor at the Farmers Market? And is that a deadline to sign up with the Farmers Market Association? Is that what I'm understanding?
I would think the Board could modify anything it wants to.
We have a representative of the Wolfboro Area Farmers Market group here that perhaps could answer some of these questions.
On the application, Dave, it says must be received prior, received on or prior to April 15, 2017, for the 2017 market. And, and I believe that...
I, I applied before that date and sent the check. And I've got them both sent back to me, my check and my application and why I was refused.
I, I think that would be a question for the Farmers Market Association or whatever.
Well, I think it's, I think it's a, you know, this is an issue for us. I understand that the Wolfboro Area Farmers Market is a nonprofit entity. They have a right to decide who can sell and who cannot sell, but we have a right to decide whether we want them to be using our property for only the cost of half a pot, a porta potty if they're not going to conclude our, our, all our local growers. My feeling when I read this sentence, which you read, which is in our agreement, why I supported this, it says, a seasonal weekly event which local growers, and local to me is Wolfboro and our, our area. And so I think that that's very important. You know, is somebody in Concord local? Not to me. It seems like it's, it is a regional market, not a local market. It's more of a food market because I saw somewheres that there were going to be lobsters. And I think that's very different than the picture that we all understood it was going to be when we approved them using this space. And I, you know, my feeling in, in on this, in this contract, we have ten days, which we can give them written notice and we can terminate the whole thing. I hope that we can come to some kind of agreement with them tonight, that they do allow all Wolfboro farmers and farms to be part of this Farmers Market. But I do realize they have the right to not. And then we have the right to decide whether they want to still use it, allow them to still use it. I'm with Dave. I, I believe it should be Wolfboro.
Also, time is of the essence because it's June 7th. So we can't have a hearing on this in August. I mean, I would, I, I think that we should, in my opinion, and I have, I'm not a farmer and I have, didn't even talk to Dennis, although I admire his layout there, I think that we, we cannot prevent any qualified Wolfboro farmer from being part of, on our town land, being part of the Farmers Market. So I, I think that effective immediately, this has to change. That's my opinion.
Well, license agreement, if I may, Mr. Jones?
Sure.
Is by its nature revocable. That's an essential element of license. It's something that can be revoked. And as you see, there's a provision in here that requires ten days notice. And so we could begin that process if that's Board's druthers or perhaps...
If you don't mind, I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm Fred Martin. I'm Chairman of the Wolfboro Area Farmers Market. And I just have a statement here I'd like to read to you. Just take a few minutes. The name of the market is the Wolfboro Area Farmers Market. And it's been that since the inception in 2002. The founding members of this market were not even residents of Wolfboro, but they knew that for a Farmers Market to be a success, diversification from surrounding towns was needed. In the first years of the market, vendors from Tuftonborough, Brookfield, Osiphe, Tamworth, Conway, as well as Wolfboro were all welcome. The purpose of the Wolfboro Area Farmers Market is to promote local agriculture by providing a marketplace wherein locally grown, raised or prepared food and farm products are for sale to the public where educational exhibitions pertaining to agriculture may be given. The vendors and products sold needed to be within fifty-mile radius of Wolfboro. Because of Wolfboro's location close to the Maine border, this encompassed portions of Maine. A few years ago, the Board added to this by adopting the state of New Hampshire's definition of local, which states farm products grown or processed within the state. Exceptions to this rule would be for something unique which were not covered by other vendors. We always encourage people to talk with the farmers and ask questions regarding how their products are grown and produced. The Board of the Wolfboro Area Farmers Market strives to bring a unique and balanced mix of vendors and products to the market each year. Preference for approval of applications is based on returning vendor versus new vendor. Vendor type, product mix, and any other consideration that the Board reasonably believes is necessary to maintain a successful market. Prior to the selection of any vendors, the Board develops a spreadsheet listing all applications, applicants, and items to be presented at the market. This is done to ensure that we do not oversaturate the market with any type of product which could negatively impact the vendors of that product. Of the vendors that were approved for this year's market, over ten vendors have been participating for more than five years, and several of those have been with the market from the beginning. That is why preference is given to returning vendors over new applicants as they have an established customer base who return year after year. Unfortunately, a market can only sustain a certain number of vendors with the same product type. Returning vendors have invested many hours of time, effort into building a presence at the market that is beneficial for the whole market. While the Board would like to be able to include everyone that wanted to be a vendor at the market, the Board realizes that there's a limited customer base compared to, with larger metropolitan areas such as the seacoast. For the 2017 summer season, the Wolfboro Area Farmer Markets Board approved thirty of thirty-eight applications. Among the approved vendors are twelve area farmers. Four farms are from Wolfboro. We have six bakers, two with jams and jellies. The Board will give preference to a Wolfboro vendor if their product is new, not well represented, or is unique to the market. The three new Wolfboro farms that applied this year were Haynes Hill Farm, DeValter Farm, and Three Creek Farm. Haynes Hill Farm was approved because their produce is certified organic, which the market customers have been asking for. Three Creek Farm had a unique offering of duck eggs and live lobster, and he's a Wolfboro resident. The application for DeValter Farm was not approved because in the judgment of the Wolfboro Area Farmer Market Board, all products listed were sufficiently represented at the market. All applications received by the Board were given much thought, consideration, and discussion. The Board respectfully requests that the licensing agreement not contain a provision saying who the Board has to accept as a vendor. Are there any questions?
I guess my...
Again, speaking for myself, I would not renew this contract next year. And I would suggest that Wolfboro farmers start their own market. I mean, I think it's terrible that, that any Wolfboro person paying taxes, having a farm, and it's not easy to have a farm, can't be part of this. I, I just don't agree with this at all.
Yeah, I guess I go back to the same thing. You have all your rights to have your rules and your procedure. That is your Farmers Market. I think you're using public land. Then we need to look at whether it meets the needs of Wolfboro to our public and whether we should give it to you for just the price of a porta potty. You know, it may be that, that if they're going to exclude Wolfboro, that we need to charge a fee. You know, I think that's where we are. We need to, that is public land. The people who cannot be part of that farm, Farmers Market, have paid their taxes for the upkeep of that land. So I'm with Dave. I believe that we need to have, either you're willing to change and include all the Wolfboro farmers, or we need to renegotiate this contract and maybe look at putting some kind of fees on here. I know that people come to the market in Wolfboro and, and the surrounding, and, and are like it and want to, want it here. I don't think that that's the case. Maybe there's a better space for you that isn't.
Well, it's really a community event now. I mean, people look forward to it every Thursday. You have local people, people that come here for the summer that return every year. And we are providing a, a space for other nonprofits to come in and talk about it. We had the Curling Club there last week. We got the Police Department coming. We got the Fire Department coming with...
But it's, it's a Farmers Market. And it...
Correct.
And is, my thought when I supported this was to support the agricultural in our town. And when we first hear, I think you adopted this fifty-mile somewheres along the line. When it was presented and I was on the Board, it wasn't that we were going to accept farmers in some fifty-mile radius. You know, my feeling was it was going to be, I would say, kind of in the Governor Wentworth Regional School District, that area. We have, Wolfboro has a lot of things that take up an area, but it's a lot smaller area. We are the center for those other towns. So that's where I stand. I don't know where the other people are on it.
Fred?
Yeah, I just want to say I agree with Linda and Dave with everything that's been said so far. And I kind of relate this to, you know, kind of like a, even a free enterprise type thing. I mean, I ran a business in this town for, you know, for, I ran a business for over twenty years and the business was in for over forty years. And it's same type of principle. Just because we, we might have felt there was enough other contractors in town, there shouldn't be any more coming in. We had no right at all saying that another one couldn't come into this town and, and just try and establish themselves and, and survive. So I kind of relate this whole thing, you know, this whole concept to that, that just because we have some produce, people there sell the same thing that Dennis wants to sell, should be allowed to come in there also and, and, and offer his products out there for the, for the public.
So could I clarify what you're saying? You're saying just farms?
No.
No, we're saying give preference to Wolfboro.
The Wolfboro farmers, even though you may have duplication of product?
Right.
That they be allowed to come on and sell their product?
Yeah, but it's gonna, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a farmer that would, that we would accept.
I mean, I sell, I sell eggs from my house, but I'm not going to the Farmers Market to sell them because I got enough customers now.
They not be allowed.
You wouldn't be allowed.
I think, I think the thing is, Fred, that most of us, I think, feel that even though somebody applies and you don't, you feel it's a duplication for a Wolfboro farmer now to sell product, I think that's what we're, what we're saying is they should, Wolfboro farmers should be allowed...
It's farmers. What, what I really want, want to see it is to say anybody in the Wolfboro because they're a taxpayer. Some Farmers Markets have degenerated to like crafters coming. So if we have people knitting, I'm talking about just farmer. That's what I wanted to clarify.
That's what you're, what the definition here is a locally grown, raised, very clear.
Okay.
It's a farm event, an agricultural event, which is what I think we all thought was going to happen.
Also, it's on town land. I mean, if you go and hire...
No, I understand, I understand.
Go hire a Meadow, go have it at Meadowbrook or someplace and who cares, you know?
I personally don't care if it's fifty miles away or, as Sarah had mentioned, the definition of a farm in New Hampshire. That's fine. But I think that we, as a Board, are saying, if somebody comes in and there's a duplication, they're from Wolfboro, there should be a lot of space.
Okay.
Not somebody from, from say, Osiphe or Alton or wherever.
Yeah.
But somebody from Wolfboro, even if it's a duplication, should be allowed to sell their product.
Okay, I understand.
While you're using Clark Park. You go somewheres else that we aren't meaning that we want to change. That's why I'm saying you're an entity, but as you're using the, our town land.
Yeah.
I'd like, I don't know what power the Selectmen have, but I'd like to recommend that, that your honorable Board, and I really appreciate the Farmers Market, I use it all the time, and we do buy bread from the people over in Maine and everything. But I suggest that effectively, if you have thirty people, I don't, I don't think you're going to have a gang of Wolfboro farmers, but that it be open this summer to any Wolfboro farmer that wants to be there. How many Wolfboro farmers got rejected?
One, it appears.
One. Just one?
Well, then let, let that one in, you know? Makes it easy. What? Okay, okay. But let that one person in this year if he wants to be there. And then, then think about the rules next year. I mean, if you have thirty-one people instead of thirty, that's, I'm just trying to be fair. I'm trying to be fair to Dennis because Dennis, and here again, I have no, no connection with Dennis whatsoever, but he is a taxpayer, he employs people, he runs ads in the local paper. And if he wants to be in the Farmers Market, you know, fine. Like when we give the hawkers and peddlers licenses out, we gave preference recently to, to a lady in Wolfboro, although a lady in Alton was very qualified. And I think that on Wolfboro town property, that Wolfboro residents have a, should have a special consideration.
Sarah?
I, I would just say that, you know, make it clear that we're not saying that these people from Wana-Lanceet, Sanbenton, you know, all of these other places shouldn't be included. It's just that when you have thirty and only eight of from Wolfboro, we're just trying to give a little bit more level playing field to the people that actually make that part possible.
Thank you. So I'd like to see if the Board agrees to this, adding a line into the license agreement under, I think we'll, under, under terms, that any, maybe you can read that, any Wolfboro farm or farmer has filed for an application on a timely, timely manner, be accepted by, or given preference by the Farmers Market to be able to sell their product at, on town property, the Farmers Market. Should we word that a little bit differently or?
I, I think that I, I would support that in concept. We may want to have town attorney just...
Sure.
Clean it up so it, in where it fits, but I'll second your motion.
As an amendment to the license agreement?
Or do we, it, or is it, it's not, in my understanding, it's not valid now because we don't have all signatures?
It hasn't been signed by the Historical Society yet to this date.
Would you be willing to, if we added that sentence, re-sign an agreement with that line?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
That's what I would like to see us and, and then, then let the DeValters in. Okay.
You seconded it?
I seconded, yep.
So motion's been made and seconded. Any other further discussion from the Board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next, we have old business. Any other business?
Yeah, I have some, any other business. One is that I'd like to inform the public that's June 12th, that's this Monday, the town will be pulling milfoil out of Back Bay. They'll be using the joint board dash unit. Reason I would like people to know that is one year we had a person in town call the police thinking we were polluting Back Bay. So, notice to all, we're going to be back there and there'll be some muddy-looking water coming out of that dash unit.
Mr. Chairman, I have one other thing too on, or any other business. I'd just like to mention, here goes, whatever, but...
No, that's great, thank you.
Not so ago, I read a letter to the editor of the paper, Mr. Lemire, about cable company and stuff like that and about the, you know, suggested the town possibly look into becoming its own cable company. It just kind of intrigued me just a little bit to think about anyway and just have a discussion anyway and see if anything went with that. I don't know if that's... I don't know if that's anything the Board would want to entertain on a, have a discussion some evening on that or if it's even a possible, I don't know if it's possible to do anything like that.
I had asked Mr. Owen about that about a few months ago.
It's a, it's an interesting idea. There are some models for municipalities that have done that in New England. Shrewsbury, Mass. is the best example I can think of. They, they operate their own cable TV system as well as internet access for all, all the residents of the town. But what they started with is they had their own electric company. They had a municipal electric department and then they built it out to provide these other services because they've already got the poles and the wires. And so it, it can be done, but it would involve, you know, a lot of study and a lot of investment to get there years.
I, I guess I, my question is, we just not that long ago renegotiated with Metrocast. And at that time, I thought there was a pretty strong feeling that we wanted to get out from under Metrocast and that your comment to us was that there were so many regulations that was very hard to do.
As far as breaking the license, the franchise agreement that we have, that's all federally regulated. And you have to have extremely strong cause to be able to break that franchise agreement. But what Brad is suggesting is not alternative route to getting to those kinds of services for the community.
And Metrocast would still be here? We just compete with them?
Well.
I mean, I'm just trying to figure out if that what you're looking?
I don't, I don't know the answers to those things right off the top of my head. Like I said, it, it would probably require, you know, feasibility studies and extensive amounts of, of funding to get to anything like that.
I think we should talk about it. The amount of money that people spend on internet cable.
I think people are pretty unhappy at the rate it's been going up. So I, I think it's worth a discussion, see where we are.
Find some kind of outline for it anyway.
Yep.
Just Owen can check into that.
Might want to take a, a little study trip down, down to Shrewsbury sometimes. I, I think you'd be very, very impressed.
United States trip.
By, by what they've done there.
All my family is down there, you know?
Yeah, there you go.
There you go, Dave.
You'd have a place to stay.
Last, last time I, yes, it's a great dynamic town actually. And it's amazing, the, my, the grandkids go there and their school system, they have, you know, robot, they have all these science, it just make, amazing, the, the Shrewsbury school system and what they do.
Moving right along. Tabanat's report.
Okay, before we get there, can I bring up one other item of other business?
Sure.
We have Mr. Sims here this evening with the Lakes Region Model Railroad Museum. And they have submitted a grant application to the L-Chip Program. And they've been invited to submit a full application. And he needs for the town to sign off on this governing body authorization that approves the submission of the grant application by this group. So if that's agreeable, I have the, the forms here that made out.
Do you want to have any questions?
Nope.
Sounds like a good plan on your part.
Good, thank you very much.
We rely on you to make our museum count up one, you know?
One notch.
Yeah.
I have a quick question for Lynda if I might, Mr. Chairman. On the mill foil, is it a one day affair?
No, they'll be out there at least three at this point. We're having a hard time because one, we, the water is still pretty murky. And two, we haven't had a lot of hot weather for it to grow. So it looks like we'll, we'll be in there for three days. If we find a lot, they'll be in there that week. They'll come back probably sometime in July and then sometime in August.
Okay. The reason I ask is we want to sail our radio controlled sailboats on Tuesday afternoon.
They, they usually work around that. They'll go to another part of the lake if that's what you're doing.
Thank you.
Okay, if you're ready now, I'll, I do have a list of things here I wanted to go over as far as news items that I can report. First, we discovered when we went to pick up our newspapers Thursday before last that the Granite State News was closing its offices in, in Wolfboro and has moved them and has consolidated their operations in, in Meredith. And found that very distressing news. And I know Mr. Beeler's here this evening. I don't know if he cares to make any comment about that or?
Well, just briefly, that the Salmon Press that owns Granite State News, Carroll County Independent and nine other newspapers decided to consolidate all its operations in Meredith. They also closed the Littleton office where the Littleton Courier was produced. And they, they didn't close their Lancaster office yet, but it seems like that's in the cards at some point. But that was their decision. They still have freelance reporters. In fact, that's what I'm here tonight, not as the editor of the paper, but as a freelance reporter to report on the events. So there will be continuing coverage of Wolfboro, but it isn't quite clear exactly what format it's going to take. But I'm trying to do my part to make sure that the town gets in there. And that's sort of where it is at this point. Isn't quite clear there. I understand, and I'm just reporting this so to speak, that there are some people talking about maybe having Wolfboro's own paper once again, but I don't know where that, at this stage, that's all I've heard is talk. But it was quite a surprise because it was quite an abrupt decision. It was Wednesday afternoon and, you know, myself and the two other people were telling, well, we're closing the office and Friday's your last day. So it was done very abruptly.
Okay. Tom and I went over to, this is sort of on the subject, went over to, the Granite State, Salmon Press is donating all of its morgue, that is bound copies of the Granite State News going back many years to the town. And also the photographic files, if they take a picture of Linda Pickett, for example, for an article, and one picture is published, maybe they have three pictures. So flipping through these, we have one, have one, for example, of Roger Murray years ago. And so all these, we went over to see Cindy Scott and, and I had a long talk with Cindy today. I haven't talked to Tom since, but I think we're trying to engineer something where we have a Wolfboro Public Library and a research, research center. Already you can go there and go on computers and, and access the actual issues of Granite State News. My wife and I have donated them a library of historical books of all the different towns in New Hampshire, the town histories, which they will be using. So it's going to be a, it can be a regional resource center, which I think increases the aura of the already excellent library and seeing that they're in fundraising and so forth, it, it adds to what they're doing. Now, my, my particular gratuitous comment is that it's been since 1960 that a new newspaper was started in Wolfboro. Maybe one should be started now, but that's a, that's a private comment.
Just to clarify, that Salmon Press is willing to donate the materials and the pictures are at the library. I brought them over on Monday. The question is what to do about the bound volumes. And as Dave knows, when I came in to get the meeting packet, I said, we are still trying to find a place for the bound volumes. Because Cindy Scott is perfectly willing to do that for the reasons that Dave just said, that she really would like to, the library to be a, a resource for people who are interested in history of Wolfboro. But they just don't have any space. Of course, that's the reason why they're proposing a building expansion. But until, until and if they do expand the building, she really doesn't have any space because I, I, I actually, I physically delivered the pictures, so I know how she sort of squeezed it in there.
I'm wondering, we have the Historical Society and they have that barn.
Well, we, we tried that.
Historical Society, in my opinion, is sort of in hibernation now as far as, no, as far as working with the public and having, you know, I don't, they have one person, Mark Lush, who's a very fine person, good friend of mine, only one employee now. And, you know, they're not, they're not like they used to be where you could go in and groups of people, cool kids could go in. They don't have the facilities at the moment. We asked them and we were told very, very correctly that they do not want these newspapers. They don't want to set up an archive, which is fine, but the library does. And the library already, if you go in there now, and Tom and I were in there the other day.
Well, the library also has a, a wonderful postcard collection that somebody donated to them.
Do they?
Yes.
Well, you better write a real good article on this and tell people how they need to give to that library project.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. No, it's a tremendous, I mean, we were over there talking with Cindy on a, what was it, a Thursday after, morning at 11 o'clock and that place was packed on a Thursday. I mean, it wasn't wall to wall, but it was extremely busy at a Thursday at 11 o'clock.
We need to get Bill Gates to name the library after his father or something.
Yeah. Got to find that deep pocket.
The school is named after, not Mr. Carpenter, but he put up the money and said, this is named after my mother, so.
Yeah, the school's named after the mother, but still, there was a naming process going on. And the Historical Society just, they, they were not into this at all. So, you know, it was Cindy's suggestion to ask the town if we could find some room in this building to store these volumes temporarily until she can take them.
You have to help out with this too.
We've talked about the basement or possibly the electric building. We're going to try to find a home for it.
Yeah, see if, see if that's.
But you're going to need to make sure that it's, they don't get moldy.
I mean, I, my view is I'll take them home if I have to, but you know, my house is not exactly a, an archival quality storage facility, whereas this is a, now a first rate building thanks to the, you know, the voters of Wolfboro. It's a terrific shape.
Thank you.
Other items, the town is acquiring two new electronic message boards in conjunction with the Center Street Reconstruction Project. Those are, will be the first deliverables. They were going to be required for, you know, notifying the motorists, the detours and this kind of thing, that kind of information. And given that it would cost about as much to rent them as it would be to buy them, we're buying them outright, whereas the state's paying two thirds of the cost. And so we will have two new electronic messaging boards in addition to the unit, the radar unit that the police department has now. So we'll be able to communicate with the motorist better in the future. The concrete containment structure down at the old railroad freight house has been demolished. I don't know if any of you have been down there to take a look, but it's gone. There's parking spaces in its place. Can't ever tell there was anything there before. PW did a very nice, nice job. You may have seen in your packet, we received a request from Carroll County. It's a request where they're asking us to pay our, half of our annual assessment early. Pay our, our annual assessment, well, last year it was $2,733,690. So you're talking like 1.35 million dollars. They're asking us to pay early. Their rationale is that it would help the county reduce their borrowing cost. Of course, the law only requires that we make the annual payment. And what may reduce the county's borrowing cost, the town of Wolfboro would lose the interest that we gain on those funds. So unless the board feels a strong desire to do this, we're, we're not at the staff level, we're not inclined to.
I think we're better stewards of that money.
Yeah. You received a consumer confidence report on the water system. This is an annual report that's required by EPA regulations. It gets sent out to all the residents in town that are on the water system. You have received a couple of invitations to open house kinds of events. Sugar Hill Retirement Community's having annual open house on Sunday, June 11th. Huggins Hospital is having a, what they're calling a Heroes Gala, which will be a cruise on the Mount Washington on Thursday, July 13th.
Mr. Owen, I don't see any cost. Do you have any information on costs or are they going to have us free?
For which?
The Huggins Hospital.
Yeah, I didn't see a cost either. I mean, if you're interested, I could call and.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to find out. Would anybody else want to find out? Yeah, let's, would you find that out for us?
Will they be serving lobster?
Well, exactly. From our farmer's market.
Okay, I'll find that out.
Yes. Locally harvested.
The.
Only Wolfboro lobsters.
American Legion is accepting applications for their Independence Day Parade for units that want to participate there. And Harold pointed out that in two years, in 2019, it will be the 100th anniversary of the Fourth of July Parade in, in Wolfboro, that it was started shortly after the end of World War I by the, the veterans.
It skipped a few years.
Okay, he did mention that. The fire department has notified me that the town has, will be eligible to recoup some of its storm-related funds from the March Blizzard. It mostly affected Moltenboro, but you know, they declare these things by counties. And, and we did have some storm-related costs, mostly in the electric department where we had about $17,000 of, of costs. So we will be pursuing, getting some reimbursement out of that. You all received copies of your water system asset management plan. That's the, the final. The, the Cantwell case, this was a ZBA case involving Brewster Academy, has been settled. I've gotten the paperwork on that now. And Pete Chamberlain asked me to let you know that the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank had their bond sale with a result that our bond, the interest rate on our bond that you just authorized recently will be 2.67%. They had a very good bond sale. I think that's everything I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee reports, start down with Brad.
Yeah, so last night we had a planning board meeting. We had a couple fairly easy public hearings. One was on the Depot Square, condominium or buildings down there, down by the Chamber of Commerce. They came in for a site plan revision to eliminate units number five through 10. They're going to be staying with just the four units that are currently, currently there. So they're going to be staying with just the four units that are currently there. And La Boca Bakery came in for a small site review. They're moving in over to, what was it, the Wolf Den or formerly the Strawberry Patch, over there to get going, so...
That's good, that, too.
Yep. So that was it for me.
Dave?
Last Saturday, I spent the whole day at New Hampshire Municipal Association with their attorneys and so forth with 91A, Lighttono Law, new section, pretty interesting. Monday, at ZBA. Then last night, Linda and I went to Moltenboro to that collaborative session, and they've set another date, a month from now, for the next one. I thought it was pretty well-attended, and it was, I thought, pretty well-run.
Yeah, they were talking about electricity, and they're trying to, as a group of towns, purchase their electricity together and get a better rate. It sure made us realize how lucky we are in Wolfboro with our rates and the struggles that they're having, so I thought it was a very good meeting. We all attended the special election. The... You and I also did the dock committee.
Yep.
I went to a chamber social. I presented at the chamber quarterly meeting. I went out on a boat on Back Bay to survey milfoil. That's a pretty bay. Every time I get out there and look in at the town, it's just a very pretty view. I then attended the milfoil joint board meeting, and I went with Dave last night. That's all I have.
Thanks, Linda. I didn't have any meetings, but Dave?
No meetings. We all went to the election, which was a very nice event. It turned out than we all thought.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, questions in the press?
Can't hear you, Tom.
Wasn't there a decision by the U.S. District Court in terms of the Yamatucci case?
Yes, I was just going to report that out to the board, that it was dismissed with prejudice.
Okay, do you have a copy of that decision?
Are you going to email that to us, the copy of that?
I did, about 4:30, when I found it.
Okay.
My email.
Any other questions? Yeah, okay.
Sarah Silken, now I'm here as wastewater woman for hazardous waste. I just wanted to remind all the citizens and everyone that our hazardous waste collection, which is coming up for June, which will be the third Saturday, June 17th, is also our first medicine collection day, so bring your hazardous waste, but please, bring all those medications that you don't know, where, you know, it's a big fight out there to take care of these drugs that go to places and to people that they shouldn't, and we've been working on this. This is our, I think it's our 12th year now. We're just trying to do our little bit, our little corner of the world, and so I hope people attend as they always have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Suzanne Ryan, I'm pleased to hear that you're going to establish a road committee, but do you have any concept of what the committee would be? Mr. Owen, have you considered, like, what the marching orders would be, or what the goal would be, or...
I'm going to let the committee determine their...
I mean, when you advertise it, what, like, how is it going to be presented so that people would know?
It's going to be the rural and scenic roads, the committee to German policies and procedures and what have you.
Would there be a little blip about?
I imagine I'll make up a little bit, yes.
Come up with something, yeah. Okay. And then the other thing is, I'm wondering, I know you haven't discussed it as a board, and you haven't discussed it hopefully at all, but separately in your minds, have you given any consideration, and also I'd address it to Mr. Owen, to a capital reserve fund for major restoration of roads?
No.
It would... It's just a concept. I know that some towns do it, and that it would be in addition to the annual appropriation. It would be set aside for major projects. I would be hopeful that we could have some discussion about that with... Maybe Mr. Ford could come in, and once he gets that road service management plan underway, and then starts thinking about the financial end of it. I mean, it could be, a capital reserve could be a supplement to the $750,000 they ask each year, or maybe you'd have a tough year, and you say, "Oh, my goodness, we should only ask for $500,000 this year, but we have a reserve fund accumulated, or, you know, the money in the bank that we could use to supplement the Warren article." There's a whole bunch of different ways that it could be done, and I would, I would hope that in the interest of good financial management, maybe that could be done. I don't know how to do it personally, but I'm sure that you could figure out something with David Ford, and the board could work on something that would...
It's like a good topic for the CIP committee to discuss.
Does, yeah. CIP.
Yeah, okay. And then just the last question. Sometimes you have public hearings and sometimes you don't, and I looked online to see what your rules or your policies were relevant to that. I know town meeting and Warren article all have a process by state law that you have your public hearings, but how do you determine, like, public hearing for Fisherville, or public hearing for this, that, or the other? What is the policy for that?
Can I make a comment? One of the things I get, one of the things that I'm sure the other selectmen do, people will come and say, "What do the selectmen say behind closed doors about Fisherville and everything else?" And the executive meetings of the Board of Selectmen are strictly personnel and litigation. We have never had, and I've been on it for a number of years, and you were on it before, too, we've never had something, well, okay, we're going to have an executive session, let's discuss Fisherville. We don't do that. So anything that you want to have, anything that is discussed is 100% public, no exceptions, no correspondence, nothing.
That wasn't my question. I didn't ask about non-public session.
No, but I mean, we don't have this... You said, "What do you got, what do you, what are the selectmen doing?" The selectmen haven't done anything that hasn't been in public.
I believe...
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going down that road.
I believe she was asking about the public hearings, and generally, those are... We do public hearings when they're required by statute or by town ordinance.
Okay.
And on various other occasions, like this town dock committee thing, we're doing a public hearing because DES suggested that the town conduct the public hearing, because otherwise, they would have to conduct the public hearing. A public hearing would be required, and they suggested it would be better if the town did it as opposed to having, having them do it.
So there is a town ordinance that addresses the other issues that would fall under a public hearing?
Well, there's town ordinances that require public hearings, such as temporary outdoor event permits, the alcoholic beverages permits. If it's required in the ordinance or in the RSAs, we do public hearings.
All right, I'll look them up. All right, thank you very much. Have a good night. Have a good night with the weather we're having.
Yes.
Yeah, finally.
Yeah.
Anyone else from the audience? If not, I'd entertain a motion to move into non-public.
So moved. So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Yes, yes, yes. I just got to talk to Dean a second.